All right. Hello out there. Thank you for coming to our meeting here Thursday, January 20th, January 30th, 2020. If you wouldn't mind, please sign in in the back. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join me.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a number of public hearings today, but before we dive in, are there any public announcements? Anybody would like to make an announcement? All right, seeing that, I will let you know about our current claims list. Claims received as of January 3rd, 2020, to January 22nd, 2020 by the Commissioner's Office. Total $5,259,559.57. And if you'd like to see how your hard-earned money was squandered, you can check that out at our website. Our first hearing we will convene as the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we'll have a staff report from our very own Lauren Ryan. Thank you, Lauren.
Good afternoon. Thank you. For the record, Lauren Ryan, Planner with Community and Planning Services. This request today is from Jean Mostad, whom is represented by Paul Forsting with Territorial Land Works for variance from the setback requirements that's established by Citizen Initiated Zoning District Number 43. This zoning district was established in 2002. Section 4 of the zoning district establishes the space and bulk requirements of the zoning district. That section states that the applicable definitions in Chapter 1 of the Missoula County zoning regulations are applicable. Those zoning regulations states that setbacks are to be measured from the edge of a roadway easement. The applicant today is requesting to reduce the front and rear yard setback from 20 feet to 10 feet. The subject property shown here is a total of 13.29 acres and is located just east of Blue Mountain Road, north of the Peak Recreation Center. The property was approved for a major subdivision in 2018. The plat for this subdivision is shown on the screen here. The size and the shape of the lots, along with no build zone on a couple of the lots, make it difficult to meet the required setback measurement currently from the edge of the road easement, which falls inside of the lots. The applicant's request today is to allow for sufficient buildable space on these lots. The surrounding zoning in the area is a mix of unzoned and other citizen-initiated zoning districts. These are primarily residential and commercial uses. Here's a list of the permitted uses in residential subdistrict of ZD Number 43, along with those space and bulk requirements of the zoning district. Again, the applicant today is requesting the front yard setback to be reduced to 10 feet and the rear yard to 10 feet. The side yard setbacks will remain the same. Additionally, any garages with street-facing entrances will be set back a total of 20 feet from the property line. This will allow for enough space for a car to be able to be parked in front of the house. Staff has added this as a condition of approval for the variance. Here's a layout depicting the requested setbacks. The red lines on this plat show the requested setback areas. If we look a little bit closer at this, this just gives you a visual of the 10-foot measurement that they're requesting today from the edge of the road easement versus what it is today, which is 20 feet from the edge of the road easement. Property owners within 300 feet were notified of the request, along with agencies that were notified as well. Staff did not receive any comments of concern from any agencies. We did receive one public comment yesterday, that's why it's not included in the application packet, with some concerns for the grading and drainage with the reduced setback request. I did look through the findings with the subdivision, along with the agency comment with the subdivision, and could not find anything specific with any major concerns with the grading and drainage plan. They were required to submit a full grading and drainage plan and be reviewed by County Public Works. I also reached out to Brent O'Connor with Public Works, and he said that the B&amp;M Zoo's grading and drainage plan was included in the construction plans and were approved on November 26, 2018. And I'm summarizing his full email a little bit, but just to say that they were already reviewed and approved by Public Works with no issues. The subdivision is also zoned, so it won't trigger any additional grading plan review at the time of building permit. Given the provided setback information is not necessary for grading and drainage, they don't really see any conflicts at this time with the request. With that, Steph is recommending approval of the variance request, along with that condition that all garages with street-facing entrances shall remain that 20-foot setback from the edge of the road easement. And that concludes my staff report. If the Planning and Zoning Commission has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Is the developer's representative here? There you are.
Hello, Commissioners, Commission. Paul Forsting, Territorial Land Works. Let me start by saying that this layout took us a while to develop. We've been working on this project for several years, actually maybe three or four. It started in 2011, so we're actually much larger than that. But years ago, we met with the planning office and we tried to get the setbacks perfected, so to speak. We had showed setback lines and had discussed our building footprints and how they were going to fit. And we felt really comfortable with it. And throughout the subdivision process, different changes came up. And at the end of the day, it doesn't appear that, you know, as we reevaluated and put some of the, like a no-build zone on for some of the slopes, and it just tightened them up to the point where we don't have the building area that we thought we had. And for that, we do apologize, because, you know, when you look at our layout, we could have fixed it on the front end had we realized that the setbacks weren't going to be what we thought they were. We could have, for instance, there's a road, we could have pulled back, and then we wouldn't have had our houses so close to this slope that was ultimately protected during the review. And that's not 25% slope, it's, some of it's 25%, but some of it's just something that was discussed and negotiated as something we would protect. We also surrounded ourselves with a common area. And what that did is created, that put our rear setback line closer to our buildings. Had we realized there was going to be conflict, we would have just, you know, avoided that where necessary to overcome it. Our goal wasn't ever to say, hey, let's just get this through subdivision and then figure out how we're going to build on these lots. I want to make that clear. We definitely, and Jean was expecting to have a layout that worked, and we had the opportunity to fix it had we realized there was going to be some pinch points. And that's what we're here to do. And so I wanted to provide that information. Regarding the storm drainage, we saw the comments, and so we looked pretty thoroughly at the plan just to see if it was, you know, pushing a house here or there was going to overlap onto some facility that we had proposed. And we didn't see it. They're not there. There's not going to be a conflict from that perspective. The building sizes themselves will stay the same as we originally proposed. And then that's how you do a grading and drainage plan. You say, I'm going to do an approximate building of this size. And that's not impacted here. This isn't going to push us into another, a larger category. This is just going to get us that size house that we thought we could get. So that's all I'll add. If you have any questions for me, please let me know. Thank you.
Any questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission? Any public comment on this?
Good afternoon. Jean Curtis, for the record. I would support the change in the setbacks. This citizen-initiated zoning was created a long time ago. And one of the very unique things about this citizen-initiated zone is the fact that they, early on, identified how to protect the ag land in the area and how to have some space for nice homes, which this will do. And all of this property is not on any of that ag land, so I think it's a reasonable request.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move that the request for a variance from the required setback measurement from the edge of a road easement established in Part 1 of the Citizen Initiated Zoning District Number 43 regulations be approved, the approval being subject to the condition that all garages with street-facing entrances shall be set back 20 feet from the edge of the road easement.
And second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you all. Our next hearing is on a resolution to adopt the new 2018 building code from the great states. Okay, I'm sorry. We got to close this meeting? Open the public hearing.
So the Planning and Zoning Commission, and this is, we've gone through this before, and we've recognized what an awkward procedure this is, but it's been given to us by the legislature. The recommendation that the Planning and Zoning Commission just approved now then goes to the Board of County Commissioners for your consideration and a final action and vote on the variance request.
Should we open the public hearing then on this?
Yeah, so I believe, Sean, so open the public hearing, and then they have to make the final motion and vote.
Correct.
So the public hearing is now open, and we could entertain a motion.
Yes, unless there is any additional public comment. I will move that the request for a variance from the required setback measurement from the edge of a road easement established in Part 1, Citizen Initiated Zoning District 43 regulations be approved. The approval is subject to the following condition. All garages with street-facing entrances shall be set back 20 feet from the edge of the road easement.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry about that. You only told me three times, and I still got it wrong. I'm sorry, John. All right, our next public hearing. Where is Nicole? Nicole White. Okay, Steve's here instead. Okay. This is on a resolution to adopt the 2018 building codes and increased fees for building electrical, mechanical, and plumbing permits.
Okay, Stephen Hutchings, Building Codes, Public Works Department. I'm just going to address the code portions of this resolution. We were notified December 7th by the Building Codes Bureau that they were adopting new codes, 2018 editions of the various codes that are listed in the resolution proposal, and the 2017 National Electrical Code. Some things of note are that the state is allowed for adoption of some appendices chapters of the residential code specifically applying to tiny homes and straw bale homes, which are, is good. They've not been in the codes before, so. We're required by the state to adopt these codes within 90 days of notification by the state. And this is a little challenging this year because they skipped the 2015 codes. We're currently on the 2012s, and typically the codes are modified every three years to some extent. Some extensive modifications, sometimes minor modifications. But nonetheless, the codes were not adopted in the 2015 cycle, so we've got basically two cycles that we're jumping through. So there's been a little bit of a learning curve for us as inspectors, and there will be obviously for the builders as well. But the inspectors have been through some training that was provided by the state to basically help transition from the 2012 to the 2018s. So that included a lot of education on the 2015 codes as well. So we are just trying to get these codes adopted as required by the state. And Nicole will address the fees portion of our proposal.
Thanks. Any questions?
Can I be up here, over there? Whoever's, okay. I will stay right here. I will be talking about the fee increase on the second resolution that we are asking you guys to adopt. Pretty much, we are asking to pass a resolution raising fees on mechanical plumbing, electrical, and building permits. We are raising our fees now to align with the code changes that Steve just referred to. Operationally, it works best to change all these together logistically, as well as to only have one large change for the public now, instead of one right now and then one at our fiscal year, because contractors don't really care about our fiscal year. And we thought it was easier to just have all the changes logistically come out together as one. Some of the public outreach that we've done includes collecting emails for contractors. We've been sending them newsletters for the past couple months, making them aware of these code changes, and new fees coming out. We've updated our websites, worked with communications to update social media. We have signs in all of our offices. Our inspectors have done a great job of spreading the word out in the field to the people that don't come into the office or maybe are not getting our emails. And then we've been conversing with our major contractors and developers to make sure that they know that these fees are coming and that they're aware of the code changes. So why are we raising them? Several reasons. Mostly, city annexations. We've been losing a significant amount of revenue, mostly with the development park the last year. But we don't really see a decrease in our workload. Our permits now are mostly single-family residents, remodels, garages, et cetera. And those generate less permit revenues, but keep us just as busy. For example, we go all the way up to Condon to inspect an $11 water heater, which will now be a $13 water heater, and that does not cover our costs at all. Cash reserves has been used to cover deficit for the last two years. If that keeps occurring, we won't have a healthy reserve, and the construction economy is very hard to predict, and we may need to use that at some point in the next couple of years. The building division operates under the Public Works umbrella. They have subsidized our department for many years covering personnel costs as well as operational costs. This will no longer be happening, and this demonstrates an additional need for the fee increase. Currently, at this point, our revenues are $35,000 less right now than they were at this point last year. We also have to cover mandatory employee cost of living and union increases, which average $10,000 to $15,000 a year overall, and we have not kept up with that additional expenditure. We do not take any general fund or tax dollars. We are 100% funded by permit fees. We haven't had to raise our fees for almost a decade since 2011. If we raised fees every year from 2011 until now at about a 2.5% increase, it would be equal to about what we are asking for now. So how did we choose the new fees? We did a very thorough fee analysis of other jurisdictions to compare costs before deciding how much to raise them. We looked at State of Montana fees, Helena fees, Great Falls fees, City of Boise, Teton County, Wyoming, several different places to see how people are raising their fees, what their processes are, what their permits look like. Just out of curiosity to see if we were on par with them and kind of what the trend is right now. I found that jurisdictions of similar geographical size and population that also keep their fees currently updated reflects that this change is on par with those entities. So we aren't just raising fees to match the cities, but the percentage between the city's fees and the fee increase we needed was the closest matched. It logistically and administratively made more sense after research to match most of theirs. However, we are not matching all of the city's fees. I did other analysis, too. I estimated if we raised fees 5%, 10%, 15%, and 20% to see what those raises would generate for revenue, what we needed to cover our costs and to not have to use any of our cash balance in the next few years. We also looked at the actual cost of what an hour inspection takes, including costs for inspectors, gas, and vehicle, which is $62 per hour. We looked at the salary of our plans examiner to make sure our plan review fee covered her salary and any others that performed plan review, which it was not, thus we're upping it by 5%. It was 20%. We are now upping it to 25%. So who gives us authority to raise these fees? We receive all of our authority from the state, and the state specifically states that city-county jurisdictions can make and set their own fees. It also states that, provided that the reserve amount does not exceed the amount needed to support the building code enforcement programs for 12 months. So that's stating that we cannot have a cash balance that's above one year of our cash expenditures. Currently, our cash balance is about $600,000, and our forecasted expenditure is about $1.1 million. So there's about a $500,000 gap between what we can actually have in our reserves. So in conclusion, the decision to raise fees is not something that we took lightly. We are very aware of the growing construction costs in the current housing boom and that our fees have a ripple effect. But it's very important to us to provide exceptional customer service to the public. Being flexible, knowledgeable, and helpful is our main goal while also protecting public safety. We wouldn't ask for this increase if it didn't align with accomplishing those goals. Any questions?
Thanks. Yeah, should we do public comment first? Thank you. Public comment. If you wouldn't mind, make sure you say your name, so we'll get it in the record.
My name is Jeffrey James Halverson. Oh, that's loud. Glad to see you all up there. And I want to take a second for, I think you should, before you approve this, you should take a look at the history of how building permits were put into Missoula County. A lot of you campaigned on transparency and letting people know about meetings and keeping the people, the public informed about stuff. These building permits were implemented by none of you guys, as far as I know. They were put in Missoula County, and I lived in Missoula County since 1997. I believe it was 2004, 2005. I never even heard of this at all. My realtor, when I bought my house, had never heard of this at all. Most of the building contractors I had dealt with didn't know that Missoula County had building permits in there at all. This is not, it was not put in by what was called transparency. I've dealt with the building permits, and Steve Hutchinson, I think, is an asset to the county. He's been nothing but great in helping me when I applied for permits. But that being said, I thought it was quite ridiculous. And there's a lot of people who have gone through the building permit process, and you should talk to them directly and see what they think of it. Building permits were not put in by a public vote of the people. It was put in by three county commissioners, and it should have been, it was a tax on everybody who ever has a house. And I think those taxes should be approved by democracy, not by a dictatorship. I think that even though they're elected people, I understand that. It should have been informed to the people. It should have been mailed to every single property owner who is going to lose their rights to work on their property. It's going to say, you're going to have to beg for your masters for a permit to fix your roof, to fix your window, to improve your sightings, or anything else. That was not done. And that's how I recall it. What happened afterwards, so the people that apparently did protest came up and said they did not want to have to have a permit to work on the house that they owned. The county adopted a building permit process that said that private individuals did not have to get a permit to work on their house. Contractors, commercial buildings, multifamily dwellings did. Missoula County got sued by the state. They said that's discrimination, because people who are handicapped have to hire a contractor. You cannot discriminate, and it also adds the price of affordable housing for multifamily things. So six months or eight months after the county told everybody it was not going to apply to single-family residences, that people that own their own homes and they could fix their roofs, this county changed that and adopted a resolution to make it affect everybody. This created a mass confusion, because again, lack of transparency, no notification to the people that did, and even the people that heard about it said, oh, I already looked into it. It doesn't going to apply to me, because I own my own home and I can still work on my house. And that's the kind of stuff that was put in and not done right. I would, again, I would say that the right way to do this is to throw this back to the voters. And we have a big election coming up. Put it on the ballot. And throw it to the voters to do it the right way this time. And this is what we have. We have a building department that is failing and is not making enough money to support itself. And do we want to keep the building permit process in Missoula? Let the voters decide. It's going to cost this much more if we do. If you don't want the building permits, this is your time to be heard, and this is your time to vote on it. Again, I talked, I ask you to talk to some of the people who have gone through the building permit process. I have a friend who lives in Missoula, and I know this isn't the county, but it is a joint-city-county thing. He added-
Not a joint-city-county thing.
The building department is no longer joint-city, oh. But it can add a lot. He spent $117,000 adding two rooms to his house. And that makes a lot of these improvements unaffordable. For landlords, if you get a permit to change a hot water heater or something like that, and the building inspector comes out and says, this also needs to be fixed, and this also needs to be fixed, this also needs to be fixed, the landlord in the future may not opt to put in a new energy-efficient hot water heater instead, because he doesn't want to go through that kind of hassle. And that's, and it encourages them to let their houses fall apart, and that's what creates slums, in my opinion. People don't want to get a permit to put a new roof on, so they don't put a new roof on, and the properties deteriorate. This is, the price of these permits add to the affordability of homes. And I think it's a real thing when somebody can add a lot of permits. And I understand. I think that it costs the city to do certain things, and if you're going to keep building permits, that maybe exactly you're right. This is, we have to raise the prices to it. But at the same time, it's like I said, let the people decide and let the people vote on it for the first time whether they want these kind of permits. In closing, I like to do comparisons. So I'd say, what happens if Donald Trump wanted to put a tax on diapers today to pay for Space Force? And you would say, not everybody wants Space Force, and it's an unfair tax that only applies to people with families and kids. That should go to the public to decide, not a dictator to decide. And so again, I ask you to throw this, throw the entire building permit process to the voters and let them decide. And ask from your constituents and the people who voted for you whether they want to have this building permit process. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Edward Klassen. I live in Condon, Montana. My background is I've been on a job site or working environmental law my entire life. I worked for the government for 20 years. I did safety, environmental law, and building codes as well. The county commissioners had no jurisdiction to adopt them. You have the jurisdiction. Each jurisdiction in the United States and outside the United States has the right and the responsibility to adopt building codes that meet their jurisdiction. The county commissioners put this in place on an ad hoc environmental reach for IBC, International Building Codes, so that we can make sure that we have the snow load, the regulations for insulation. And for the first two and a half, three years, we didn't have a framing code. We didn't have an electrical code. We didn't have a plumbing code. And the only reason to get a building permit is for framing, electrical, and plumbing. That's the only responsibility a member of the community has to come to the county to get a building permit. Now, that being said, for the first few years, they were illegal. You guys did not adopt these building codes. My suggestion, along with this, is that you guys step back, look at the public comments, look at the responsibilities of your job to adopt these building codes, and adopt the universal building codes for this area. We have individuals within Condon that have to spend $650 to get a permit to put a deck on their house. The $650 doesn't apply for the permit itself. It applies for the engineering report for the deck. You don't need a snow load. Everybody knows that you do two-foot-on-center, two-by-eight construction on a deck. You don't need an engineer for this, but yet we're required to get an engineering stamp and report before it gets reviewed by the county. They do a good job at the county commission. They do a good job of review. But if we have to go to an engineer to get it to go and be approved by a reviewer, what are the reviewers doing? Why do they need 15% more if they're not doing the job they're asking us to put forward? If we go to an engineer and I spend $1,000 to do a deck, it should be already approved. It should sit on their desk, okay, an engineer that we trained in our colleges here in Missoula to do this job, printing this thing out. But we're not seeing that. We train these engineers, and some of these engineers are sending things with floating walls. They don't know how to do the environmental impact studies. These are, all these items that we have, we have a store up there in Condon that almost did not get built because of the environmental impact and regulations that we have here. None of these building permits can be done at this point in time, any of them, within 250 yards of a waterway. With the two cases we have now, all waterways are above ground and below ground. Any waterway within 250 feet of a building cannot do it, because dirt is a contaminant. So the process that we went through just there can be shut down by any environmental group, any building that you want to do, whether it be a deck or anything. If you touch the ground, it gets in the air or the water, or it's within 250 feet of a waterway. I live by Cooney Creek. It's closer than 250 feet, 250 yards. So we need to step back. If we're going to have building codes, we need to have American Universal Plumbing Code, Universal Electrical Code. We have engineers on the East Coast. We have engineers on the West Coast. We have engineers on the East Coast, we have engineers on the West Coast, we have engineers here in Missoula that have the responsibility to make sure that we are following what's safe for the individuals to live in. We have to have 30 feet in Missoula County for a snow load, correct? Anyone here, is it 30 feet? Snow load? Huh?
It's by pounds per square foot.
Yeah, pound per linear foot. 30 feet, snow load?
Depends on the area.
Correct.
It's a square foot on a roof.
That's right. Condon area, 110. We live in a rural area. They're getting 110. Some of our buildings are 200 because we have to follow different rules than you guys do down here. They're worried about the cost to come and do our inspections, but yet they're not worried about doing the cost to do your inspections. That's discrimination. That is, they're worried it costs $65 an hour to drive up to Condon, but it costs them the same price to come down here and do the building within the community down here. I know we're on the, the far end of the community. It takes an hour, two to do a round trip. That doesn't include the inspection. But you want us to be a part of your community. You receive a lot of money from our community. It's very wealthy. We do very good homes, but we can't even put a log cabin in our community without getting it engineered. We have log cabin builders in our community that have to have variances to do something that's been done for over 100 years. I know the insulation codes, I know the building codes, I know them to be, it's for safety. But to put an instant water, hot water heater, I shouldn't have to drive to Missoula County and back, spend $15, wait for them to come out, say it's put in correctly if I have a plumber do it. If we're going to do the building codes, for us in the rural community, we should be able to do that online. The inspection, if we have a licensed contractor, should be able to do like they do for a well. Licensed contractor signs it off, they come out and one inspection, done. The final, electrical shouldn't have any difference. However, you shouldn't complain when you have to do the job.
So we've got to make sure that other people can speak here, too.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks a lot.
In closing, I just, my, my whole point is, if we're going to adopt building codes, you have the responsibility to adopt those. And if we're going to complain that we need more money for us living in the rural community, you have to take the, the aspect that, you know, we live in this community. Just because we're farther away, everything's far in Montana. Thank you.
Any other public comment on building codes? Building code adoption? Steve, do you want to say something?
Yes, Stephen Hutchings, I'd like to respond to the, to previous speakers. First of all, the hearings were not done in any kind of a covert manner over the program when we started it. There were five public meetings held throughout the county. I attended all of those meetings. I was the building official for the city at the time, and I attended the meetings just out of concern to making sure the county was going the right path and, and also work as a consulting basis if I had any questions. Anyway, there were five hearings. There was one in the Sealy Lake area. There was one in Frenchtown. There was one here at Cordage here. There was one in Lolo, and there was one out in Clinton. And they were all noticed very well in the major publications at the time. And I, I don't know any other way that they were noticed as far as, you know, on websites or something like that. We weren't really that into websites, I don't think, at the time. But they, they were noticed very well, and they were attended. In fact, the, the meeting up in Sealy Lake had the highest attendance of all of the, all of the meetings that we had in the various communities. And so, it, it was not done. It wasn't snuck in under the radar in any kind of a covert manner. We were very transparent and notifying the public what we were doing and what they were attending on doing. And there was a comment about roofing, you know, roofing permits are $90. And that was based on two inspections at $45 an hour, which is what we established or where we started the program at. And we, initially, when we started the program, we didn't have roofing permits. But we actually had a couple, I had a couple of complaints from citizens that had a roof done, and it was done very badly or very poorly by a licensed contractor. And we essentially were faulted for not inspecting roofs. And I could pull up the reports because I had, I actually did a, requested an inspection report for these two homeowners that didn't know each other. They were just in various parts of the county. And they requested that we come out and look at it because they, they thought the job was bad. And then I went out and looked at it and said, yeah, this is a bad job. And they, they paid actually $90 for the report, you know, because it took about two hours' time for driving time, clerical time, inspection time, what have you. So basically, that's, we had about as much time in that report as I would have had in a permit. And then the second speaker mentioned several things. Specifically, Montana Code Annotated 506106 does allow local jurisdictions to establish a program. So the authority comes from the state. Like Nicole said, we get all of our authority from the state to initiate the program, to adopt codes, to develop fees and what have you. And there was a comment made about having to get various kinds of permits. Well, we do issue plumbing, electrical, mechanical, and building permits. Now, the, the plumbing permit, there's a statewide exemption that is, that has been in effect since before we started and is still in effect now, that a homeowner working on their own property that they reside in does not have to get a plumbing permit anywhere in the state of California, California, where did I get that from? Anywhere in the state of Montana. And we have some jobs where we've issued a permit for a new house and the owner's doing their own plumbing. Now, that has to be a, a house that they are going to reside in. It can't be a rental property or being built on the speculation of resale. So it's very specific to, to allow that exemption. There is no exemption for a plumber, and it's, it's required in Chapter 60, 50, 60 of the MTA, that a plumber has to get a permit before he does the work. And that's just established by the Department of Labor and Industry. So, there's a, when the, there was comments about a building review, well, it's not just a review for the building. Projects are reviewed by the Health Department, which includes floodplain, things for septic, make sure that they have a place that has a septic system that can be approved if there's any high, high groundwater in floodplains or something like that. So, all projects are reviewed for building performance, for, for the building codes, to the, the health code, to zoning if it's applicable, if there's in the zone district. And it was also a comment about having universal codes. Well, we do. They're called the International Building Code, International Residential Code, International Fuel Gas Code, International Mechanical Code. The only one that is different is the plumbing code, which the state of Montana is under the Uniform Plumbing Code, which has been in effect for years and years in the state of Montana. And it is still, as you see in our, our proposed adoption, that it is the Uniform Plumbing Code that is being adopted versus the International Plumbing Code. So they are truly international codes. In fact, they are even codes that are adopted in Dubai, England, Australia, what have you. So they are truly international codes. The, the snow loads, there was a comment about snow loads. Well, the snow loads are established by the state, and those are ground snow loads. They go anywhere in Missoula County from 30 pounds ground snow load, which is the state minimum, up to 150 pounds, like up at Lolo Pass. So, areas that are, have higher snow loads than 70 ground, 70 pounds per square foot ground snow load have to be engineered, and that's right in the code. The, the span charts for all the rafters and floor drawers, what have you, only go as high as 70 pounds ground snow load. Anything above that, then you have to have engineering on it. And there was a comment about, well, different codes. There are, there are no different codes. Every jurisdiction in the state of Montana has to adopt the same codes. They can only adopt the codes that the state adopts, no more, no less, and they cannot modify the codes beyond what the state does. So when they give us the code, they say, this is the code you're going to enforce. This is how, you can only enforce this portion. For example, the residential code, it has 30 chapters, but the state only adopted chapters one through 10, and then chapter 15 of the mechanical code. And that's because the chapters one through 10 actually control or regulate building aspects of, of the structure itself. And then chapter 15 is the mechanical ventilation portion of the codes. Aside from that, then the, the state relies on the plumbing code, the electrical code, and the mechanical codes for those portions of, of a residential structure. Something about log cabins. Well, not everyone builds log cabins the same. You get 10 different guys, you know, they could have a full log or a Swedish cope or D-logs, or there's numerous ways to build a log cabin. And they're, they're not conventional construction. You know, maybe years and years ago, hundreds of years ago, maybe log cabins were little cabins. They weren't 3,000, 4,000 square foot multi-story structures. They were little cabins that were pretty easy to build. And, and there are some guys that do some excellent jobs, some, some great jobs. But because it's not, there's no prescriptive path in the building code to build a log cabin, it has to be engineered. And that's same with pole barns. You know, there's 10 different ways to build a pole barn, maybe more than that. But because there's no prescriptive path in the code, those have to be engineered as well. And it has to be engineered for the area where they're at, the snow load that is in that area, and also the different seismic zones. We have two seismic zones in Missoula County. We have a seismic zone C, which is essentially is the valley here. And then as soon as you hit the border area and-
So I really appreciate all the information. What I'd, what I'd like to do right now is to try and see if we could limit the back and forth and let, let the folks up here ask, ask our staff questions.
Do not have to come to Missoula. You can apply online for our permits, too.
Thank you. Okay. Just address us rather than take on Steve.
Hi, my name is Grace Salodi, and I'm from Condon as well. And I'm here kind of to learn about what's, what's going on. I've been hearing a lot of stuff throughout our community, and I'm more in concern and more problem-solving to this whole issue, realizing we need to have things inspected and so forth, so on. And she mentioned a hot water heater, having to go for that. I know someone that just had a new roof on their house. They paid the permit and nobody came and looked at it once, you know, so it goes both ways. So I was hoping a way to make it not so cost, it's just killing people. The people that are trying to, I, I'm more concerned getting a little older, over 28 now, my grandchildren, my children, trying to build, trying to do their own thing. The costs just keep going up. Like now, my taxes on my property are pushing $300 a month, and everything is a fee or a tax, whatever you want to call it. It keeps growing. And I'm trying to problem-solve and see, can we, instead of relying on it as a county thing or whatever it is they're doing, because I'm ignorant to this, can you have an independent person be an inspector, go through the criteria to learn how to do it right and have independent people do this? I, I don't know. I'm just trying to figure it out.
Thanks a lot. You guys have any questions?
Looks like there's some other folks popping up. I, I will here in a second, for sure.
Gentlemen's walking up.
Raleigh Matthews, builder from Condon. And I don't have any issues with them adopting the new 2018 code. It's time to come, but I would like to see if we could get a little bit of a repeve and maybe let it go the full 90 days so everybody has a time to kind of regroup and see what the new codes are going to affect the future projects so we have a little bit more planning. And also on the fee increases, they seem like a large jump all at one time, and maybe we could sort those out a little bit or delay them a little bit longer so that we can kind of get ready for it. And maybe, you know, our suppliers usually try to give us a little bit more heads up on when they're going up, and maybe we, people can get a few permits bought before they do go up. But overall, they're doing what they're hired to do, the job. So if we have to go to 2018, that's what we need to go to. Thank you.
Jean Curtis, Missoula County. I have a place in the city and the county. I traveled around with Steve when they, these codes were adopted, and Mr. Halverson is right. We did look at whether or not we could exempt people from doing work on their own house, but that was not allowed by the state. Two things, you have two resolutions. So on the first resolution, I agree with the previous speaker that because, because you are jumping from the 2012 to the 2018, it would be good to wait that, you have 90 days to adopt those international codes and the state codes, to give them a little more time to read. And also, folks who are doing construction have already bid on jobs that are going to happen, that they're now going to pull permit. So they're also going to have to figure out, okay, we bid on that job, but now we need to do some little thing that might be in the codes. So I think you have till about March 7th. So I think you could take action today with a March 7th or a March 5th or something deadline for those new codes, because the, the inspectors themselves just got the books recently. The second resolution is about increasing the fees, and this program should pay for itself. You do have good inspectors, but it does seem kind of all over the map. The biggest one, I, I sent you comments last night, so you have a copy. But if you look at the, taking a modest, single-family home of 1,200 square feet, the electrical permit for that would jump from $178 to 302. That's almost a 70% jump. So it seems like some of these might be a little extreme. I'm also concerned that the plan review for a house and a garage would go up like 46%. You do that in-house. So it seems like there's some things there that could take a little bit more time, and you can adopt the codes without adopting a change in fees because it's not changing their workload. And also, I've looked at your budget for this department. It doesn't reflect the increase in fees, so there's no reason why not to give folks time to finish up work that they've had in mind, finish up work that they've already bid, and have these take effect July the 1st. With probably some, if I was you, I'd be asking for a little bit more input as to how these numbers came to be and whether they're justified, which they should be. Thank you.
You guys have any questions?
Yeah. I guess first, Steve or Nicole. So as far as the adoption of the, either 2018 or 2017, depending on what we're talking about, building codes, when is that, the drop dead date for the 90 days after having been notified by the Bureau?
We were notified December 7th. So we have 90 days from December 7th.
Okay. And just to clarify, there seemed to be some confusion as far as some of the comments we heard as far as whether it's optional or not. My understanding is there is no option. We have to, by virtue of the state of Montana's regulations, adopt these within 90 days.
There is no choice. Yeah, you have to. And then also, we didn't adopt, we only adopt the codes that we, that we enforce and do inspections on. For example, we did not adopt the NFPA 99C, which is the Medical Gas and Vacuum Code. So very complicated code. We didn't adopt that because we have very, we've had one dental office, I think, put in, in the last 14 years, and the state will actually do the inspections on the medical gas system. So we did not adopt that code. But also, the inspectors have to either be professionally certified or licensed or certified in those, in every discipline that they inspect. So the inspectors are all combination inspectors, I mean, you have 13, 14 different certifications that they have to maintain. Every three years, we have to recertify, and you have to have so many CEUs to show that you've been keeping up on the codes and what have you, so.
And is there any downside? Or what would the downside be to making an effective date of March 7th?
No downside, you know? Typically, we, we have waited, I've waited until the 90th day in the past to adopt the new codes, just because I didn't want to throw new stuff on. But as Nicole stated earlier, we just felt it was a good time. And it was an arbitrary number or date picked out, I'll grant that. But it just seemed like it'd make more sense to do everything at once instead of like having, noticing a hearing and, and then do the same thing, you know, a couple of weeks later, something like that, or months later. So we were just trying to be efficient and just do it all at one time.
Okay, thank you.
The, the same question. And then, but I did have another question about the budget. We have a new employee, right? Is that, I wanted to explain, yeah, if you could explain that to us and so.
Yeah, we've been working on succession planning because we foresee most of our inspection staff retiring within the next couple of years, and it's very hard to find qualified inspectors since they have to have certain certifications that only people- that only people who work in government or in the trades have, usually not even normal contractors have them. So we hired a new inspector who's in training. He doesn't have any of his certifications or anything, but we got him approved in the budget on a year-to-year basis. And we are training him in hopes that he will slide into one of our current inspectors' positions once he is all trained up and certified. He has six months to get all the certifications he needs. He cannot actually certify or inspect right now.
Thanks.
So a question, I guess, for you, Nicole, or maybe Director of Public Works, Shane Stack. So in terms of the proposed increases, and it sounds like you have done a fair amount of public outreach, but we've also heard from folks that maybe they feel like there's other opportunities maybe to get the word out that perhaps we have not availed ourselves of. What would the downside be to perhaps delaying or keeping the public hearing open for a couple of months, say until April, to allow for some additional public outreach? How would that factor in budget-wise? What would be, I guess, the pro from my perspective would be the ability to do some more outreach that maybe we have not done today? What would the downside be?
Go ahead, you go first. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think if we wanted to wait, I don't have a problem with it. As long as Nicole and Steve don't have a problem with it. I think we had figured, was it about 50,000 additional revenue that we would get this year if it was adopted? You're talking a few months, even if we went to, say, July as Jean Curtis had recommended, that's just, again, that's a loss of 50,000 in revenue for this fiscal year. And we have some staff that will be coming on the books this next year that aren't on the books this year. And so I think we would be able to survive, there's no doubt. And we have enough in our reserves to cover those costs for the remainder of the year. It's just, I think we need to be cognizant of as we move forward, making sure that we have the revenues we need as we move forward into the year. So answer, short answer is, I think we're flexible on dates.
Flexible at a cost of $50,000.
For the fiscal year.
Yeah, I mean, that $50,000 might have to end up coming out of our cash reserve because I, we're going to have to take money out of our cash reserve this year to cover our extra personnel costs and new vehicles we had to get for the inspectors. So it's just, that's going to be even more money that we're going to have to take out of our cash reserves for this year. But we can, we can be flexible if need be.
Thank you.
Jean Curtis had one thing that I forgot. You notice there's a group here from Condon today and that happens, that's because I happened to, because I spend quite a bit of time in Sealy, mentioned to the, they came up with the guy that runs the Pathfinder. And so there was an article in that paper. That's why there happened to be folks here. So I think that an outreach to community councils and some other things, just give people the opportunity. Because sometimes, you know, for your own house, you might call and see, so what's an inspection going to be if I'm going to do this? And you've got that in your mind and now this rate's going to go up. And I am a little concerned that the signs at Public Works said that the fees would take effect on the 1st of February when you guys hadn't had a hearing. It just seemed a little presumptive. I mean, maybe it could have said proposed, but anyway, I think more outreach is good.
Keep it tight, Mr. Halverson.
I wanted to point out what Steve said, that there was community hearing. He said that you had meetings all over the place, but I didn't get to ask him, was that before or after they changed the statute to say that it was going to apply to individuals as well? And the second question is, he also admitted that there was, that he did do inspections for people on the roofs and it was voluntary. And I have no opposition that people can choose to get a permit and can choose to have the county do their stuff. I just don't think it should be required. And I also would like to point out, when I was at the building permit office, which was the new one out there, that the roof was leaking inside the building and there was a bucket there. Now, if you don't see the irony of somebody telling you how to roof your house and how to engineer your house, and the people that are telling you how to do it had a bucket to catch the leaks that was coming into their building, then I'd like to do things my way. Thank you.
Any more questions from you guys?
Somebody left something up on there.
Want to give it to Emmy?
Yeah, it was left up here.
Thank you.
Somebody left something up here.
So I guess the thought I have, it's not optional for us to adopt the building codes. We can certainly adjust the effective date and I would have no problem pushing that out to the 90-day limit of March, seeing that there's no real downside to that. As far as extending the public hearing on the fees, I would only want to extend it out as far as it would allow us to do a bit more public outreach. I think the end of June or July 1st seems excessive, but I would certainly entertain a month or two, which clearly would cut into what otherwise could be collected, but might be a reasonable cost to pay to allow folks to weigh in and have some additional education with the public.
Maybe we could align this with the same March 7th.
And Steve or Nicole or Shane, what are your thoughts on that?
I'm fine with that. Yeah, that would be all right.
To do another month and a half of outreach, is that...
So I guess on that score, my question would be, as far as the second resolution that has to do with the permit fees themselves, would it be best, as opposed to having, we could either have an effective date of when those fees would go into place and set that today with the adoption of the resolution, or we could hold the public hearing open until sometime in March to take additional public comment and perhaps...
I would, I would lean that direction and then we could learn more things through public comment and we can make a decision in March.
That sounds good.
Yeah. So let's, let's keep that hearing open?
And it looks like the public hearing schedule in March is either March 5th or March 12th or the 26th.
Any of those look more or less available? Okay.
Five.
How about the 5th? Looked good?
Shane?
Can I recommend not the 5th because I won't be here?
Yeah. How about 12?
12 works very good, yes.
12, thank you Shane. And beyond that, are we ready for a motion for, oh?
I'm probably missing something, but I thought that we were under a 90-day requirement to adopt those, so we would have to do it sometime within 90 days of December 7th?
Yeah, we're going to adopt the building codes by March 7th and then keep the hearing open on the fees until the 12th.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Was that your motion?
My motion would be...
So if I wanted to make one comment, John, would I do this pre or post-motion?
Well, you can do it either way, but I recommend if you've got a comment, a substantive comment, make it right now before there is a motion.
All right. Substantive, substantive comment. I just wanted to reiterate a few things that might have been lost in the fray there. There is definitely sympathy towards homeowners working on their own houses and building permits, but the state disallowed that. Just to be clear on that, that wasn't a Missoula County decision. Other things that struck me, sir, when you said, well, everybody knows you do 2x8 construction on a deck. Unfortunately, everybody does not know. And if we could, but the state said we can't, allow you to work on your own deck, go for it. I don't think we have any interest in getting in your business. However, as Steve pointed out, there are contractors out there who may or may not know, or maybe they do know and they're trying to cut some corners. And the idea behind building permits is around public safety. So somebody doesn't have that roof fall in on them while they're having breakfast with their children. Such things have happened in other places. In fact, there was a cabin in Sealy that was crushed by snow load and recently moved. Now, there's going to be a building permit, building code and a permit enforced so that roof won't fall in due to snow load. So this isn't dictatorship, which seems rough to say about three people who are elected. And I do appreciate being compared to Donald Trump two weeks in a row. Well done, sir. Come back next week, we'll have a, be a trifecta. So there's my substantive comment. Let's, let's have a resolution.
Okay. And I would, I would thank everyone for participating today and I would encourage folks, since we are, I think we heard it loud and clear, that people would like a little extra time to mull this over and learn about what is being proposed. So please do spread the word. And if folks have questions, specific questions about the fee increases, let us know and we would love to get those answered. If and when we do adopt the increased fees, they will not be by referendum. We are your duly-elected county commission, charged by the state of Montana as an arm of state government and authorized to take actions like this. And that is the course of direction we will. So with that, I will move that we adopt a resolution to adopt the 2018 additions of the International Building Code, International Residential Code, International Mechanical Code, International Fuel Gas Code, International Existing Building Code, Uniform Plumbing Code, International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, and the 2017 addition of the National Electrical Code.
Second.
All in favor?
With an effective date of March 7th, 2020.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the public hearing will remain open?
Yeah, the public hearing will remain open on, on fee increases until March 12th. With that, Chris, on a resolution regarding parking on Dismet Road, Interstate Place and Expressway Boulevard.
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, my name is Chris Lonsborough. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the county. This is the second hearing to adopt a resolution creating an ordinance for a no parking zone in the area of Butler Creek Interstate and Expressway Boulevard. Emmy's in the process of changing over the technology here so we can see what that looks like up on the map. This is just outside the city limits in the area of where animal control is and part of what was the industrial park. And as you know from our last conversation about a little over 30 days ago, there have been problems with the no parking zone. The city automatically has a no parking zone, so that area is covered by the city limits. And now we're just outside that in the county area, which is why we're coming with this request today. There's been an increase of folks parking overnight and using that area, which has created problems for the business community there. And we do have some members from the community and property owners out there today to talk to you about that. And I'm happy to review those. So this is a picture of the area that's covered. What you see highlighted in red would be the three streets that are impacted. So that's Dismet Road from the intersection of Highway 10 or Broadway, up past Interstate Place and then down Expressway Boulevard to the city limits, which is kind of an unusual shape, I know, but does cover those three roads until such time as they're annexed.
Thanks. Do we have any public comment on this parking resolution?
Hi, I'm Pete Pace and I'm a co-owner of property at the end of Expressway. And there's been a, quite a few overnight campers just down the road from our property. We're trying to sell our property. And I've been out there numerous times to clean up, you know, debris. There's been people that's actually camped on our property. And the garbage situation out there is just, it's really got out of hand. So, you know, I wish, I wish, we don't, I wish one of the lumber company representatives was out here, was here today, but we really need to clean up that area out there and it's just an ongoing problem.
Pete, can you, can you show me where you're talking about?
We're right at the end of Expressway and Dismet Road, that triangle.
Thank you.
Just, just west of BMC.
So, in this area right in here.
Thanks.
Do you have, you have those pictures?
I do, yep. If you would like, I can bring those up. So what we have here, Commissioner, just a couple of pictures of some of the vehicles that have kind of been parked there overnight. Here, there's, which have included things like a fifth wheel. This is the one that Pete was referring to just a moment ago that was abandoned on his or on the property that belongs to him. As you can see, it was, the motor was removed, wheels were removed, and then garbage was strewn.
Yeah, and that, that's been cleaned up.
Yeah. And that one has been removed. And then there have been several other vehicles that are taking advantage of the fact that they're just outside the city's no parking area. And so this resolution would only establish a no overnight parking zone with the hope being that it would prevent people from coming out and moving some of the vehicles into that area that have created some of the issues for the property owners.
And then can you explain the process of the sign goes up and then what happens?
Sure. So what would hap, what the resolution requires is that we would sign the area and then it would be enforceable by the Missoula County Sheriff's Department. Usually those calls come in through 911, which will determine whether or not somebody's actually living in the vehicle or if it's just been abandoned there. And there's a couple of different routes that this can go, depending on whether it's creating a health issue. If it's an abandoned vehicle, we have a program for that. Or whether it's just a parking situation and that, at that point, the deputies would have contact with that individual and then try and determine whether it was a situation where the vehicle needed to be towed and removed, or whether there were services that they could connect them with, if it's an issue of somebody's, you know, struggling in our community.
And so Pete then would call 911, Sheriff's Department would come out, if it's a truly abandoned vehicle...
Yeah, it gets tagged.
Tows it?
Gets tagged and then towed, yes.
Okay.
And that's done through one of two mechanisms. They contract with several of the tow companies here in town, or if it's to the point where the vehicle is not drivable, it goes through our junk vehicle program, which is actually administered by the Health Department, environmental, or environmental health.
And if this was not a wheeled vehicle, if this was a trailer that was in the back of a pickup, that would be a different story.
It, those are more challenging. As you know, we, we struggle with attempting to deal with those as they don't meet the statutory definition of vehicle.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other public comment on this? Resolution or a motion?
I'm sorry, I'm having problems reading this one. Yes, I...
Oh, her screen went down.
I have, my screen went blank. So I'm going to read this one. Okay, I motion that now therefore, that we, be it resolved that a parking on Dismet Road, Expressway Boulevard and Interstate Place is hereby prohibited between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM along the both sides of the roadways as shown in Exhibit A.
Okay, I'll second adoption of the resolution.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Today, the role of Steve Nyday will be played by Jean Curtis.
Yep. I have an engineer degree in my Cracker Jack's box. Jean Curtis, I'm here representing the Sealy Lake Sewer District. As you know, the continuing saga of Pine Drive in Sealy Lake. This morning, the attorney for the Sewer District and the attorney for the folks who own the property were scheduled to meet, but that has been delayed. So I'm asking you one more time. So I think we're closer. The, I tell you, I have learned so much from Steve and learned how to search county records. And one thing that he helped me find are these amazing drawings that a gentleman in the 1940s and 50s did, retracements of these lots that we've been talking about, that this guy does. I mean, they're, they're handwritten, they're... hand colored, they're beautiful. But in looking through all of those documents, what has become clear is that while there were 14 lots in the corner, if you guys have your packet in front of you, it's kind of a little triangle space there where this little piece of road is. Notably absent from any recorded documents in the county's records are lots 3 and 12. Those are the lots that the ladies inherited from their father's company. So I'm asking you to delay, I would guess, maybe till the third meeting in March. Mr. Sullivan, their attorney, asked, and Mrs. Harrison is here today, so she can speak too, asked to not have the meeting today, so he had time to meet with his clients, because we'd provided him with some extra information. And so I'm hopeful by next month, we might have a resolution. Just so you know, I do have a request into the engineers to bring the sewer district a proposed amendment to their work plan to draw a different route if we need to. So if we could delay the meeting until March, is it 25, 26? That would be great. If you have any questions for me, I know Ms. Harrison's here, and may have something to speak.
Any other comment? All right, should we just keep this hearing open until March 26? Why not?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Matt, you're up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Matt Heimel, Planner with Community Planning Services. Your consideration at this hearing is a resolution of intent to zone unzoned property at 9772 Waldo Road. Taylor Tillman with TLK Properties LLC proposes to establish a zoning for 9772 Waldo Road. The property is located in the Y community area, west of and adjacent to Highway 93, and north of and adjacent to Waldo Road. The 9.76 acre parcel is currently vacant. The subject property is legally described as Lot 1 of Denblyker subdivision in Section 16 Township 14 North Range 20 West. The two lot 18.65 acre subdivision was platted in February of 2009. A 40-foot public drainage easement is located on the south half of the east property boundary, and traverses the property southeast to northwest. Surrounding land use to the north is residential. Permits for commercial uses have been approved for property to the south. Residential use and Highway 93 are located to the east, and the property to the west is vacant. The applicant is proposing to zone the property to CC2 General Commercial, and the property is currently unzoned. The applicant intends to utilize the property for a conditionally approved mini storage facility. That project was reviewed as buildings for lease or rent, and no building or zoning compliance permits have been submitted, reviewed, or issued for that project yet. This is a picture of the subject property from Waldo Road looking northwest. The unzoned subject property is surrounded to the west, north, and east by other unzoned tracks. The property to the south is zone CR2 Residential, and a mobile home park zone CC2 Valley West is located to the southeast across Highway 93. The applicable land use plan is the Missoula Area Land Use Element dated 2019, an amendment to the Missoula County Growth Policy. This property is designated as commercial center, with a recommended predominantly auto-oriented retail, lodging, offices, food services, and automobile land uses with residential use as a secondary use. The land use element recommends a range of building sizes from small, being about 1,000 square feet, to large, or about 80,000 square feet in area, or more, and a maximum of eight residential dwelling units per acre is recommended for the land use element. The ability to achieve higher densities may be limited by topographical site considerations, and the proposed CC2 zoning district is compatible with the commercial center land use designation. These are images from text from Missoula County zoning regulations for the CC2 General Commercial Zoning District. This, these regulations are also included within your packet. The space and bulk requirements, general standards, permitted, conditional, and special exception uses would all be applicable to the subject property if this zoning is approved. And the intent of the CC2 zoning district is to provide for the conduct of retail trades and services that are inherently automotive and highway oriented, and for commercial use of low intensity, which may require large areas of land. Maximum residential density, if connected to public water and sewer, would be 1,000 square feet per dwelling unit. Zoning is required by the City of Missoula in order to develop the property with the use of a sewer connection. The property is within the urban service area, and the city has given approval to connect to city sewer with the condition that the subject property be zoned. Sanitary infrastructure is available on the south, to the south of and adjacent to the subject property, as marked by the yellow circle on our screen. Regarding to drainage, an engineered drainage port was prepared for the applicant by WGM Group, and that was specific to stormwater runoff for the proposed storage unit buildings. As a component of zoning compliance review for any proposed structures, a grading drainage and erosion control plan must be reviewed by County Public Works, and that is not a specific condition that would be applied to this property. If zoned, any zoned property that has a proposed commercial use or multi-dwelling use with three or more dwelling units must have a professionally engineered drainage and grading plan that is reviewed by Public Works. And the purpose of that review is to ensure that site grading and the control of stormwater runoff, both the quantity and quality of the runoff, comply with the Missoula County standards. And there is a recent comment from the Public Works Department that is inserted with your comment, basically stating that any plans would need to be reviewed, and that no plans have been submitted at this time to the county for our review. And flooding has been observed on the southeast end of the subject property. This has been associated with springtime snowmelt and rain on snow events. A culvert under Highway 93 discharges drainage onto the southeastern portion of the property, and a defined ditch for this water does not exist adjacent to the property. So staff is recommending a condition of approval, shown on the screen, that construction of basements is prohibited, and the lowest floor and all utilities, including ductwork of any new structures, shall be constructed a minimum of two feet above highest adjacent existing grade. With regard to public notice, a notice was published in the Missoulaian on December 15th and 22nd of 2019. Five posters were placed along the property on Waldo Road and Highway 93 on November 22nd, and owners of property within 300 feet of the site were notified by mail on November 22nd. We received four public comments, one of which is an additional new one from Jean Curtis that was also included in the packet. I think you got that with the packet today. Two agency comments were received, and then we had the third agency comment from Public Works, that's new. And the two that we received prior were from the Health Department and County Flood Plane Administrator, both in regards to drainage issues on the property.
I'm sorry, the, the new comments, maybe I don't have the right packet. Have we? Can you read them to us, or summarize them? I'm sorry.
So the comment from Brent O'Connor, Public Works, is that there is, I'll summarize, that there was concern for flooding, and to date, no plans have been formally sent to us for review. And without knowing a specific plan for the future in the zoning, it's difficult to make a comment. And once plans are sent, they will work with the engineer and rely on engineered plans that it, the engineer contracted by the owner, to ensure that there is proper drainage review for the structures and protect areas of concerns.
And was that in response to Jean Curtis's comments, which I have not seen?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just assuming she was concerned about flooding in the southeast corner. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Now I'll summarize the planning board action that took place prior to this hearing. So on Tuesday, January 7, 2020, with seven voting members present, the Missoula Consolidated Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the zoning request with one condition of approval. After the staff presentation, the planning board members heard public comments from five individuals reciting in the area who voiced concern about the drainage issues and objected to the potential for higher density residential development. The topics further covered over the course of the planning board's discussion included mitigation of drainage problems and the potential for residential development, and the appropriate zoning designation for the property given the land use designation. A summary of that planning board hearing is included with the packet, as is a copy of draft minutes from the hearing. So for the resolution, staff is recommending adoption of the resolution of intent to zone the unzoned subject property, draft as conditioned, and a draft motion is included in the staff report and is shown on the screen. And I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is also with us today.
Would the applicant like to say anything?
Hi there, Taylor Tillman with TLK Properties. I, he summarized it pretty good. I, I could stand nearby if you guys have any questions specifically, but I think he's summarized it pretty well.
You don't have any issue with what Matt said?
Initially, no. The one condition we initially had, a little bit of a, some discussion about with the, with the condition, but we realized that was probably a good, amenable concession that we could make, just because there was those initial concerns about drainage. And even though they've been addressed extensively with the engineering report, stormwater drainage report, and then, of course, with the review that he's talked about, we figured we would just go along with that condition, even though it's, it's not in a flood plain, and it's seasonal, and it's a month, a month and a half, and it's, most of it's not even on our property. I think there's a little bit of confusion there, but we decided we would go along with that condition of approval, even though it was, it was a bit, maybe a bit much. But we feel like as, as landowners, we'd be willing to make that concession, for sure.
Thanks. Any questions?
Yeah, so John, this is a resolution of intent to zone. Could you describe the process for us? We will come back and have a final vote on this, or how does this play out?
No, that's, that's about it. This, this just, the zoning law in Montana requires that you first pass a resolution of intention to zone, and then there's a period of time where you can take additional public comment, and the statute actually calls it protest. We just refer to it as comment, sort of a less confrontational term. And then you'll take final action at some other time. And I, I'm sorry, I don't know the date.
Do we have to say what date that is now?
I don't think it would hurt to, to set the date. Matt may actually know the date of the, of the final action. And that may or may not happen at another Thursday afternoon public meeting. It may be at one of the administrative public meetings on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday morning. I'm not sure of that.
You have anything to add to that, Matt?
Or Tim, do you have anything to add?
Let's hear from the expert. Tim Worley from CAPS. I think you just need to give the protest 30 days. I wouldn't bind yourself to a date certain as far as the resolution to adopt. Just as long as we give this 30 days, you should be fine, and then you can take it to an admin meeting and make your ultimate decision. You still have discretion at that meeting to make the ultimate decision to adopt that resolution.
So it would be duly noticed for an admin meeting to which the applicant would be notified of that?
Sure, yes, yes.
And you think we shouldn't pick the date for that admin meeting? I mean, if we, at least if we do, then we're kind of done with this, at least until the next step?
Yeah, I wouldn't bind yourself to a date certain if you don't know your calendar or whatever. We typically, and plus, we have to put it in the paper.
Okay.
And just getting the trajectory of that 30 days is something that, we never pick a date certain at this step.
So you guys can do that, and then after you're set with that, you'll get it on an admin agenda?
That's right.
Perfect. Thank you. Motion? Motion.
I lost track of who.
Who am I taking?
Okay, I will do it. So I'd move that we adopt a resolution of intention to zone the unzoned parcel to C, there it is up on the screen, CC2 General Commercial be approved based on the findings of fact contained in the staff report, public testimony, and written comment, and subject to one condition of approval. The property subject to this approval is legally described as Lot 1 of Denblyker subdivision in Section 16 Township 14 North Range 20 West, Principal Meridian, Montana, less MDT right-of-way.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Matt, you don't have to go anywhere. The Trippke family transfer.
Okay. Commissioners, again, for the record, Matt Heimel with Community Planning Services. Your consideration is a family transfer exemption request. This is a request for Rodney Trippke to use the family transfer exemption in the Montana Subdivision and Plating Act to create and transfer one parcel for his daughter, Sydney Trippke. The 11.43 acre parcel is located at 1550 and 1560 Trotting Horse Lane in the Big Flat area, west of the Clark Fork River in Missoula. The property is located within the area mapped by the 2019 Missoula Area Land Use Element as rural residential and agriculture. The growth policy recommends a residential density ranging from one dwelling unit per 10 acres and one dwelling unit per two acres, depending on site considerations for, for access and sanitation, et cetera, other factors such as that. The property is owned CA3 Agricultural Residential. The proposed transfer would be in the, would be in conformance with the CA3 zoning, which has a maximum density of one dwelling unit per five acres. The proposal will also be aligned with the growth policy and Missoula Area Land Use Element. The following information that I'll read into the record was provided by the County Flood Plane Administrator regarding the proposal. Approximately half of the property, including the existing home at 1550 Trotting Horse Lane, is shown to be within the Clark Fork River flood plain shaded X. If the existing home were to be substantially damaged by flood, fire, or other means, flood plain regulations require that the replacement home to be located outside of the flood plain due to an alternate location being available. Splitting the property through a subdivision exemption creates a self-imposed hardship which would negate the ability to replace the home outside of the mapped flood plain. An exhibit from the applicant's representative documents that the existing home is accessible via driveway that will be exposed to floodwaters greater than one foot deep during the 100-year flood. However, review of the hydraulic model indicates those floodwaters will be slow-moving, such that the access falls within the low danger zone identified in the flood plain regulations. A technical memo regarding this issue was reviewed by the Montana DNRC and determined to be technically valid. If the proposed family transfer is approved, and the existing home is threatened or damaged by flood, the home will be reasonably accessible by emergency services personnel. Regarding the proposal itself, so this is the existing lot configuration. Existing Lot 13B is 11.14. parcel currently has two homes located on it, and by parent parcel, I mean the entire tract itself. The proposed parcel layout shows that access will be provided from Trotting Horse Lane, and the parcel closest to the river will be accessed off of a shared driveway. And each home has a shared, has an existing well and septic system. Those are individual well and septic. And the applicant has stated that the intended use for each parcel will remain as residential. With any request for a family transfer exemption, we review rebuttable presumptions and general evasion criteria for the evasion of subdivision review. One general evasion criteria was triggered in the review of this proposal, that the proposed division creates access to building sites within a flood hazard area. Again, according to the County Flood Plane Administrator, if the family transfer is approved and the existing home is threatened or damaged by floodplain, by, by flood, the home will be reasonably accessible by emergency services personnel. This application was sent to county agencies for comment. Other than the Flood Plane Administrator, most agencies provided a standard response of no comments of concern. Based on the facts, as presented in the subdivision exemption affidavit, and as reviewed by staff, there does not appear to be an attempt to evade subdivision review, and I now have some questions for the claimant.
Good afternoon, Rod Trippke.
Thank you. So, I have six questions for you, or five, excuse me. Did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
I did not.
Thank you. Do you or your transferees intend to transfer the property within the next year?
We do not.
Thank you. Have you talked to anyone at the county about going through subdivision review?
I have not.
Thank you. Will the property be developed?
It is already developed. It will not be further developed.
Thank you. And will the recipient of the property be residing on the property?
Not immediately, but she will. She's in school right now.
Okay. That concludes my questions. Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions?
No questions, but a message for Paul. This is exactly the type of family transfer that I like to see.
I was gonna give you one of those thumbs up, too, Paul. You don't have three minor children, you could cut this into pieces for it, come on.
With that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna motion that Rodney Trippke utilize a family transfer exemption to create and transfer one parcel to his daughter, Sydney Trippke, as presented in the exemption application affidavit.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Any other business? All right, then we are mercifully undone.
Nice job.